There we go.
So this is the work session for Sangre de Cristo's Wildfire Mitigation Plan.
Well, thank you very much, and for the trustees, great to be here. Just a point of clarification, our board of directors, only, we only have one here. This is members of the staff that, a lot of them are subject matter experts. So I invited them to come because they'll have expertise in certain areas that I don't. Anyway, I really appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight, share some information with you. And so I'll wait for the slides to come up. So go to the next one when you have to. Anyway, we have a mission statement, and in that mission statement, it says that we safely provide reliable energy. And, and we provide it safely to our membership. And we take that mission statement very seriously. And I just want to make sure that, that everybody knows that we're doing this for many reasons. And because we do take our mission statement very seriously. Um, next slide, please. Oh, by the way, we'll post this on our website, this presentation on our website, probably within, end of the week. I think it's interesting. We all certainly like trees. I don't want anybody to think that Sangre de Cristo doesn't like trees. We certainly like them. They provide comfort, wildlife habitat, and they just provide beauty. So we certainly, I don't want anybody to think we don't like trees. However, next slide, please. However, when they, around a power line, they certainly pose certain risks. And when they grow too close to high voltage power lines. And so we need to certainly try to mitigate those risks when they do. Next slide, please. So this might be a problem, I can't see that. Thank you. Thank you very much, sorry about that. So, so, you know, we've had a program development, we've had a program for years now. But pretty, I want to talk a little bit about the previous management program. Like many utility companies, the programs that they had were very reactionary. They would go in, they would do minimal cutting, they would wait till there was a problem. And unfortunately, this increased the risk to life, health, safety, people, pets, and ultimately caused allergies. So what did Sangre do? We decided to take a more proactive approach. In early 2021, our board of directors thought we need to be more proactive, a stronger stance, and not wait till a problem occurred. Proactive cutting is a ground-to-sky program. It essentially goes from ground to sky, out our pole line, which I'll talk a lot about. We increased our budgets, which allowed more cutting, and then improved reliability and reduced the chance of wildfire. Something I want to also include is, this is called, it's been labeled as a wildfire mitigation program, which is true. But it's also a reliability program. We've increased reliability by taking care of trees. The program was, was put out to bid, and it was awarded to a contractor through a competitive bid process. Requirements included adequate staffing, they were, that they were utility specialists, arborists, and that they were certified line clearance professionals. The positions were advertised and filled, and they were filled with local people. Since, next slide, please. Since enacting our mitigation program in 2021, we've cleared approximately 107 miles. We've cleared in all five counties that we serve, JV, Lake, Fremont, Saguatch, and Custer. It was an investment by its safe, reliable power. Fortunately, due to the success of our, our program, we've seen outage times go down. We've seen the number of outages go down. And we've also feel that we've mitigated fire risk as well. Next slide, please. So we've developed standards, and what our standards are, ground to sky. So if you had a pole line running down, down the center line, we clear 15 feet on either side of that pole. So we, we take into account, conductors move, trees move, and so that gives us a buffer there on how far we, you know, gives us a good buffer from our lines and from our trees. The trees, excuse me, so a lot of people ask, what happens to the branches and all the debris that you cut? The branches are generally chipped, and the chips can maybe left with, if it's near a home, homeowner. Many cases will be the chips if the homeowner wants them, or the consumer wants them. Or where we've made arrangements to haul them to the town works building or facility off of Gray Drive. And they'll be open to the public to pick up. Same thing with the large burnables, the large burnables, we could either leave for the consumer, or we can, they'll be hauled over to the town works property. Our practice that we're doing is acceptable within the industry. It's an acceptable industry, not doing anything outside of what other utilities do. What's our approach for, for BV? Well, we're going to divide the town into quarters. We'll divide it, essentially take main from east, west, and then we'll use the highways, the other part. By dividing the quarters, we feel we can locate better with the areas that are impacted. Also, we, you know, try to reduce the amount of disruption to traffic. And like I said, we'll be able to narrow down times when we would be cutting in that, those parts of town. It's a lot of people just want to know what will be. So we will impact primary lines. It doesn't impact other lines, which I'll talk about more in a minute, but it's essentially the high voltage lines. 18 miles of line within BV proper. There is a map out here in the foyer of BV proper. And it is start date. Early 2024, that's when we tend to leave. That'll give us plenty of time to plan, plenty of time to issue. Next slide, please. What I want to also share with you is examples of what this does not include. This doesn't include cutting around communication lines. It doesn't include cable TV lines. Example I have here, picture of James Street. There is, Sangre de Cristo doesn't have any electric on James Street. Rumor had it that we're going to come in and cut every street on James Street. It's not true. Like I said, those lines you see there are communication. You don't even, like I said, we don't even have a line on James Street. Next slide, please. It doesn't include service drops. Those are service poles where there's meters serving the consumer, the low voltage lines. They are insulated lines, and so we're not going to come in and cut around those. We may do a little pruning around them, but we're not going to come in and do the ground sky like we're doing on the primary. It doesn't include, if you've got a service drop to your house, it doesn't include those wires as well. So anyway, it just, there's a lot of poles out in BV that have either communication only or low voltage lines on. A lot of people see a pole, they think every pole's a power pole. It's not. Part of this program is to try to fix some bad cutting practices that have happened in the past.
Could you speak up, please?
Or me?
Could you please speak up just a little bit? Thank you.
I just pushed this a little forward.
I'm, I'm. Thank you.
So we're trying to fix some bad practices. This is a bad practice. As you can see, and you really might not be able to see from your, from where it's at, there's three wires that go right between that tree. High voltage wires. That's creating a hazard because of the wires. It's not very aesthetically pleasing, unless I think, you know, I'm not an arborist, but I would have to think that's creating an unhealthy tree. So we're trying to fix some of those situations, trying to do it right. Is that in town? Is that what it looks like? Yeah, that's in town. Next slide, please. So communications with the community. What we'll do, a postcard mailing, we will mail it. As I said, we'll be able to communicate with, with the people that are affected in that quadrant better. We'll do it through a postcard. We're going to hold more community meetings. We had a community meeting last Thursday, which I saw very many of you here there had good conversation. We'll continue to do that. We'll continue to post information on the SDCE website, social media. Prior to cutting, we will contact the affected property owners. And probably several weeks ahead of time, we will knock on their doors, we will put on door hangers, we'll call them. Our Integrity Tree, our contractor, will do a lot of that. They're very good at that. We'll also try to send out emails to affected people. So one of the things I want to ask you is, if you have an email, and you, if you're not sure if it's on file with Sangre, please call us and give us your email, and we'll be able to notify you when we're done. Last thing is, I'd like to, I'll be here, or somebody from staff will be here, you know, giving you updates, you know, giving the board of trustees. There may be some other communication as well. Next slide, please. So the question has been asked, why don't we underground? As I said, we have about 18 miles of line, of primary line, in, in our, within BV proper. An estimate underground, those existing lines would be somewhere in the $2 to $3 million per mile. Again, that's a very ballpark figure. It doesn't include, you know, any major road repairs that would be needed. It doesn't include underground communication that might be, that might be shared on those poles. It doesn't include impact to property owners if they had to do something to their service that, if we got an overhead service drop, property owner would have to also convert that to underground. It also would be very disruptive to the community. And also, you would, where there's poles now, you would see large green boxes sitting on the ground. And some of those boxes could be quite large. And the last thing is, it could also affect trees themselves, being in a trench next to a tree or in that vicinity. It could affect a tree like itself. So that's our simple presentation. Hopefully, it may have clarified some information, may have not, but hopefully it did. Or to, and with the board of trustees.
Thank you, Gary. And after the presentations, we will have questions from the trustees themselves. Only if we still have some time at the end, would we take questions from the public. It'll be, this is mostly for our education. So now I'd like to invite the tree board, the tree advisory board to speak with us.
You don't have a PowerPoint. Hi, everyone, I'm Sarah Kuhn. I'm a member of the tree advisory board. In May, we had Tom Lizza come to our tree advisory board and let us know that Sangre was developing a plan to clear trees 15 feet on either side of power poles in town. We had lots of questions after that meeting, and we really appreciate Gary, your presentation and clarifying some things for us today. And we do understand that Sangre has a duty to the public and a responsibility to keep it safe and to provide us with utility as well. We, as a board, feel that clearing trees on 15 feet of either side of the pole is a little too extreme, and we feel that this action is heisty. As the trustees know, this town has a number of heritage trees, the Turner apple farm, our Hopi crabs, our crumble apricots. We have habitat trees, memorial trees, food trees, as well as trees that add intrinsic value to the properties because of their beauty and the environmental services they provide the community and the homeowners, shade, windbreak, privacy screens, and many other ecosystem services. We, as a town, stand to lose a great deal of the advantages of this vegetation. And it seems that a carefully thought-out plan includes an inventory of the trees that are potentially going to be removed, be taken, as well as the ability of the public to comment on this action. Wish the board of trustees to enter into a dialogue with Sangre de Cristo with the hopes of reaching an agreement that is amenable both to town, the rate holders or community members, and SDCEA itself. Also, because Integrity Tree Service is a contractor, we hope that communication is very clear between the board of trustees, Sangre, and the contractor, and that any concessions that are reached are communicated. We, as a board, every year prune trees. So we look for hazardous trees, and we have an inventory of those that we wish to be pruned every year. And we put a bid, we ask for bids for those trees to be removed by professionals, arborists. In the past, we've used Bristle Country Care quite a bit, and we have Dave Letters here, who is the owner of Bristle Country Care. He has been in the valley for the last seven years, dealing with our specific conditions in this valley. And we also would like to have him talk for us regarding this action. Sarah?
One, I'm Dave Letters, owner, operator of Bristle Country Care, ISA certified arborist. I've been actively consulting arborists for the town of BV for about three years now. Walking with them, assessing trees for hazards, pruning those hazards out or removing the trees if they present too much of a hazard to be pruned. My job as an arborist is to provide a level of care that promotes longevity and safety to trees and members within the community. When trees are cared for, it promotes a loving community and awe and inspiration. And power lines are a necessary thing, and there is a delicate balance between the two. And removing on either side, regardless of the species or health of the tree, is not generally warranted. And I think going through species by species, line by line, reassessing the health, using risk assessments, track courses, people that are certified to go through and actually assess the health, whether or not it is a viable threat or danger to lines, slowing things down, and just taking a breath, and seeing what that process does and how it responds to it. I appreciate the opportunity to talk and be present for it.
Hi, I'm Tom Liverman, I'm the chairman of the board. I have a couple of concerns. One is like, all the stumps are going to be left behind, what's going to happen? Are they just going to be left, or are they going to look at maybe grinding those down? Also, the town's going to be, you know, responsible for all the trees and limbs and stuff like that that get put on your property? And are you going to get funds, extra funds to be able to process all that? Because I've been out there, and you've got quite a pile already. That, that, you know, you need more, find, you know, more money to be able to do, you know, even that project. The other thing is that there's got to be some grant money. I mean, I know that California now is, they're getting in the process, they're going to start burying their lines. You know, and I think that's something we should look at, too. I think, you know, for instance, like the, the power line coming in from West Main, you know, it's a half a mile from the town limits until it gets to or Sangre de Cristo, that alley right there where it splits. And I thought, you know, you guys could easily trench underneath the bike lane with that, well, I'm not saying easily, I know it's and I mean, that could be done. And then also, you know, it's, and then under the bike lane, after you get done, you can just pay over. It wouldn't be disruptive to any of the tree roots or anything along that line. And then the other concern I have is that any tree that doesn't gain a lot of height, that'd still be considered something that has to be removed. Because we've got some beautiful trees in West Main that don't get very high. And I don't think it would be a problem for you guys. And I was wondering, how many trees have been cut down in the county so far? Any idea?
In the county?
Yeah.
Line clearance? Yeah, line clearance, I mean, since, I don't know, can I answer that, or do you want me to, to wait?
You can answer that. In, in general, I would just, and keep.
Okay, I'll just keep going, if you can maybe mention that. And then finally, I was wondering about all the wooden structures that are in the alleyway. Now, they could be considered a fire hazard. Would they be considered, have to be removed, too? Like wooden fences and sheds and droggers that are underneath those power lines or not for right by in the alleyway? Not just the trees, but for bushes and anything that's flammable is going to be taken away. But I also feel that if there's a strong wind, I don't see how we can protect our power lines no matter what. You know, it seems like if a fire is burning vertically, that we can probably contain it. But if it's running horizontal, I don't see how any kind of removal of trees is going to make that much difference. So maybe I'll be a little step woke, but that's how I look at things. I think it's for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Any else from the tree board? Okay, then we'll go with the BV Tree Coalition. Thank you all for keeping us moving along. I appreciate that.
So it's got my PowerPoint. Thank you. Okay, so I'm Liz Morgan, speaking on behalf of the BV Tree Coalition. We just formed about two months ago because a lot of citizens around town were really kind of shocked about this massive tree destruction that was proposed. You can see our email on there. You want to get involved, we'd love to hear from you. I'll show it again then. Next slide, please. This one? Trees are important. Next slide. We are lucky to live amongst them. Next slide. Our job is to protect the trees so life is better for the people, the ecosystems, and the future. Next slide, please. If our tall, old friends and protectors must be taken from us. Next slide. It must be done with care for a clear purpose, and only where necessary to meet that purpose. Next slide, please. The BV Tree Coalition is here tonight asking for three things. We would like Sangre de Cristo Electric Association to voluntarily agree to a one-year pause on this mass tree removal project in order to come into compliance with the town's clear laws to minimize damage to trees. Two, if we, we ask the town to issue a formal notice of violation to SDCEA demanding a one-year pause to, for them to create a more comprehensive analysis of what trees really do need to be removed, and other options like burying lines or getting grass. And three, we'd like to ask the town to put the BV tree issue on the official trustee agenda this fall before tree removal begins in order to determine what official action should be taken. Next slide, please. All right, the fun part, under the laws of the town of Buena Vista, Sangre can only remove trees if they follow these rules. Chapter 5, Article 2, Section 2.5 of the BV Municipal Code controls Sangre's actions. It reads, "SDCEA shall have the right to trim or cut down trees and shrubbery only as may be reasonably necessary to protect its facilities, and so long as such steps are undertaken in a manner to minimize damage or interference to trees, shrubbery, or other natural features." Next slide. SDCEA must show us then how their plan to just cut them all down meets this specific requirement. On the face, it seems like it does not. Next slide. Further, there's mounting evidence that power lines, that overhead power lines regularly spark fires without trees even being involved. You'll recall the Louisville fire in 2021 that obliterated a neighborhood. That was found to be overhead lines sparking a grass fire. Wind and heat blew down the neighborhood. You know, Hawaii this year, they're saying it's from overhead electric lines sparking the fire. Trees are not involved. Yes, though, might catch it on fire later. And even this year, two times, overhead power lines have sparked fires on the Buena Vista disc, of course. It was only lucky that some staff were notified in time to put it out. If removing trees is no longer considered best practice in the utility sector, and it seems like that's the case, then we need to take a pause and reconsider, not just because we like trees, but because it might actually be safer to leave them there instead. Next, next slide. You might also recall the Camp Fire in Paradise, California. After a very meticulous and thorough investigation, their investigators found that that fire also, which resulted in 85 human deaths, was caused by overhead lines sparking causing fires. They said the fires spread with the help of warm temperature, dry vegetation, and strong winds, all of which are made worse by removing trees. Trees are a windbreak. Trees create shade and cool the brush below. Next slide, please. The SDCEA proposal has done apparently no analysis of current best practices, how to modernize our system, or how to minimize damage to trees, shrubs, and natural features as far requires. The proposal is therefore unreasonable and is a violation of our town's laws. Next slide. These new standards in the industry should be considered. Utility companies around the country are abandoning these tree clearcutting projects in favor of burying lines and other more modern management techniques and practices. Many utility companies are using FEMA grants to bury those dangerous overhead lines. The current proposal is therefore unreasonable and must be rethought. Next slide. Sangre seems to have ignored all other possible options, like professional tree hazard analysis to tell us which trees should be removed and which trees are safe to leave in place. Professional tree trimming, burying lines, and upgrading safety features. A more data-driven and professional approach that meets the requirements of the controlling ordinance would be to conduct an analysis of best practices, practices to achieve a clear purpose, improve safety, minimize harm to trees, shrubs, and natural features, and to investigate grant opportunities for funding better options. Next slide. We want to know how to save the trees, especially if the alternatives are just as safe or safer, which does seem to be the case, and might save us money in the long run. Next slide. Next slide. Oh, sorry, there it is. Mr. Kelly mentioned that we feel these clearcutting projects have reduced fire. Where's the report? Where's the analysis? Where's the data? Not just from our community, but nationwide. Where's the, where's the data? To tell us that this really does make us safer. I'm not, not clear that it does. Next slide. We're here tonight asking SDCA to voluntarily agree to this one-year pause, write this report, share it with us as you go. Um, so when or if some trees do need to be removed, we'll know it was done with care for a clear purpose, and it was necessary to meet that purpose. Next slide. The town of Buena Vista has the legal authority to write an official notice to Sangre stating its grievances and to bring litigation if the utility fails to comply with the law duly passed by our trustees to guide us in situations just like this. Next slide. I'm not gonna read that whole thing. That's the, that's, that's, that's the law that gives town trustees power over the situation. I'll summarize it in the next slide. Okay, under Section 12.1 of the ordinance, town may issue an official notice to Sangre alerting it that it is in violation of the reasonable, the reasonableness provision, to the minimize damage to trees, shrubs, and natural features provision, and to therefore demand a one-year moratorium on mass tree removal while conducting a more professional, data-driven analysis and propose better, more modern alternatives. If SDCA remains in violation, the town has also granted the right to bring legal action within litigation under Section 12.3 of our ordinance. Litigation is also an option. Next slide. You know, I've never thought much about how electricity gets delivered or how to keep it safe until the last couple of months when we started looking into this. We take electricity for granted, but there really are real decisions that need to be made, how to best manage our distribution system. Therefore, ask the town trustees to put this matter on the agenda in September or October 2023 to consider what actions are warranted. Next slide. And finally, homeowners, repairers, members, owners of this electric cooperative have rights. You can email us and we'll send you these links, but there they are. All repairers are members and co-owners of SDCEA. Ownership comes with the rights and powers to call special meetings, to call special elections, and to recall board members. Homeowners can also file formal complaints with SDCEA if you believe your trees are in danger. SDCEA is required to grant you a hearing. And there's a link where you make those formal complaints. Next slide. Trees are why we live here, not here. Let's not turn our beautiful mountain village into that barren landscape. Next slide. Let's all agree to take a year to explore this exciting possibility of more modern best practices approach. Next slide. And to summarize, we're here today asking SDCEA to voluntarily agree to this one-year pause to do a more thorough, professional, data-driven analysis on best practices and to minimize damage to trees and natural features. Two, we're here to ask the town to issue a formal notice of violation to SDCA if they don't do that. And three, we're asking town to, uh, this issue on, on the trustee agenda this fall. One more slide. And there's just our contact information and the link to the petition. Thanks so much.
Thanks to all of you for speaking with us. And this concludes the official presentation. So now I would like to invite the board to ask questions of any of the presenters.
You pull that outside that shows where the actual power lines.
Yeah.
Talking about are.
Yeah. Bring that in, please, Casey.
Just so we know where we're actually.
Right, good.
You guys don't happen to have handouts of that map, do you?
Do, what's that?
Handouts of that map.
We do not.
Make a picture of it. Yeah.
Peter wants it right in front of you. I didn't bring the glasses with me, so.
You can use mine.
I'll say it's for me, but.
Those are the transmission lines that we're talking about, blue ones.
Main Street. James Street.
I'm taking a picture.
It's still like a cold coast. Close to the street from town. It's another one. Are we talking about? Hey, Tom. See, the other one shows.
Tom, the other one, the overlay is.
It's out of proportion. Hard to see.
This one, this one helps because this looks like a lot of lines.
So the ditch, see your primary vegetation. Your trees here and there. Your West Main, your. Sorry for everyone.
I'll have it for a second there. I'm just gonna try to take a picture or something. So Mr. Lanza was saying that, um, West Main is the, the most vegetated of the lines that would be cleared. Is that right, Tom?
Until we do a total inventory, I am not gonna say one way or the other, but. You guys, wanna see this?
Possibly get that on your website.
Yeah, we can, we can do something and then you can open. Maps with little lines.
Figure it might help with some questions.
That map is incorrect that you're showing them, sir. That map is incorrect that you're showing them.
The overlay isn't quite, but it kinda gives a perspective.
It's not showing the lines correctly.
It's not correct. If you look at the overhead lines boundary that you have right there, South Pleasant Avenue is an example. It shows the lines that goes along Pleasant Avenue. And the map that you're holding up right there shows that they go behind the houses. So it is a considerable difference.
The overlay, right, so it'll just go off the yellow. That's some pretty much all vegetation.
So other trustee questions? Somebody, do you have any questions?
They've mentioned that underground lines are too expensive. But apparently there's grants out there that would make it not so expensive. I would say any future developments that we have in the town that the town should request underground lines and no more overhead lines.
Can I have that, Joe?
No.
And we can start replacing the above-ground lines as they need maintained. I would think if your grounds were underlined and not exposed to the elements and Mother Nature, that your underground lines wouldn't require near as much maintenance as you're doing on your lines today. There wouldn't be a danger of a power line coming down. And I, I do think that before any trees are taken down, that complete studies truly need to be done before you just go in and clear thirty feet of vegetation from the town. It will definitely make our town look a lot different if that isn't taken care of. And I would truly hate to lose a lot of trees unnecessarily. Understanding that, I listened to your report that, um, it is for safety, but I think there's other ways to maintain safety that would fit our town better.
Peter?
Oh.
I was supposed to connect Harley off the, the grant thing that I was, so yesterday I was at a meeting that the EDC held. It was about broadband grants, right? Cause right now I think the state's getting eight hundred and sixty million dollars to help with broadband. And essentially fiber lines, right, which go underground. So I was wondering if there is a possibility or any way to maybe team up with somebody like Aristotle or somebody like that to find some kind of financial, um, sorry, is there a question back there? Some version of a solution where maybe there's a way to work together if something is being trashed or saved. Just looking for some version of consensus, maybe that helps everybody out. Broadband is obviously something we need as well, but if we could get the lines buried. If there's something already being dug, maybe there's just synergy there. Sorry, cause you had mentioned grants, and I know that's happening, and just something to think about and consider.
Peter, any questions?
Uh, I have a, a question about, so I think you mentioned that wildfire mitigation piece of it, but it's not the main purpose of this. The main purpose is for stability of coverage. It's both. I mean, it's, I, I don't know if it's weighted more than one over the other, but it's, it's more than just wildfire mitigation. Okay, I was just wondering, are you, along with the trimming, um, updating the power lines or the poles, modernizing only? I think the PGE, PG and E fire that we were talking about earlier, that was larger from, I mean, current of those are very egregious from like, I think like eighteen ninety equipment or something. But are, are you also modernizing the poles and the lines along with this? If it's about the stability or is it just the vegetation?
Well, we do that on a routine basis. We, we, we make sure our pole lines are stable. We make sure everything is good on a regular basis. We patrol. I mean, we have routine maintenance that we do in part of our, what we call our construction work plan. That's done regularly, whether we trim trees or not.
Okay, so I mean, it isn't just cause it's.
And I, I practice exactly where you're talking about the, the Paradise Fire. They were saying that there was poles from the nineteen twenties in the Paradise Fire. I'm reasonably confident we don't have any poles from the nineteen twenties.
I don't think we have electricity.
So. Fire mitigation, um, within town limits, it's really not about mitigation. It's about line stability within town.
It seems.
I'm curious, why, why do you say it's not about fire mitigation in town?
Within town limits, a lot of the species aren't prone to igniting. You know, cottonwoods, willows, like those are water-loving trees, you know? Ground fuels underneath is what, what would spread the fire on the trees.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'd like to know what, um, what your plan is for mitigating the surface after the trees have been removed. If you have just dirt, it's gonna turn into tumbleweeds and, and kocha, which is probably more of a fire hazard than any tree. So what is the plan from Sangre as to, um, as to what's left after you're finished?
We're not gonna go in and mow, if that was one, if that's your question. We're not gonna go in and mow. We would leave, um, I think, that's about, we would take the stumps down to, you know, maybe slightly above grade or right about grade, um, small shrubs. We're not gonna mess with small shrubs, shrubage, you know? I, I can't, I'm an example of a small shrub, but large shrubs, yeah, we would take those out. Generally, in, out in, in certain areas, we chip, and we'll leave the chips in the right of way. I mean, I guess if that, if the town wanted that, we could do that, but we do. But to answer your question from a standpoint of trying to prevent tumbleweeds, I don't have an answer. We'd have, I'd have to get back to you.
They like, they like to go into disturbed soils.
I have a comment. Tree, tree stumps are tripping hazards. I don't care if it's four inches or two inches. And what kind of a liability is that to the town of you, this stuff? No tree stumps, I would say that we need to go with. It, it's gotta be ground level or below where you're creating a bunch of tripping hazards.
Yeah. So, um, do you, do you have an objection to the request for a delay until next year? I mean, next October? And, and also, would you be willing to do some more analysis and data? Because I, I see all your points, but I don't see any data behind them particularly, or, or just analysis. I mean, just a chance to answer some of the questions that came up tonight?
So, yeah, and, and, great. In regards to delaying, um, we have issues out there that need to be taken care of now. So, um, I'd have to think, give that, we, I mean, we have to confer on what we do there. The data and the plan, that is something that we will develop. We, there's been a lot of assumptions made on how many trees will be cut. And I don't know who made those assumptions. As I said, somebody said that they're, we're gonna cut every tree on James Street. I don't know who made that, that, that statement. There's a sign on James Street that says, save this tree. It's not a power line. We're not even gonna be on James Street. So, yeah, part of it is to develop that plan and to find out which trees we gotta cut.
Okay.
And it has not been established, that has not, we have not published anything. That's part of the process why we're here. That's part of the initial dialogue we started. And we'll be happy to share that information with, with everybody. I think there is, again, I think there's a lot of assumptions that are made that we're gonna go in and just wipe out every tree around.
Sure. And I think partly because there isn't the information out there, and it's sort of a chicken and egg situation. But I think we can have a much more robust discussion if we have that information. And also, the whole question of varying lines, I mean, that is, that's something that is eventually coming, I think. And I feel like, or I think that, um, I would, I would be interested in a cost benefit analysis of that. And you've, you've given us some figures, but I, I wanna see something more in-depth to, uh, help us understand, you know, all, all the costs and all the benefits compared to replacing power lines now, compared to wind-caused fires, compared to that kind of thing. Just, just, I'd like to see a little more analysis and data. I mean, it, just for us to evaluate if it is worth going after grants and maybe to sort of figure out what sort of grants are available.
Well, you're talking about, what you're asking about is to do engineering analysis. Engineering analysis are very expensive to go into the level of detail I think you're looking for. And so I, we're not funded to do that at this point. We certainly could kind of, we could give a little more detail than two. But it's, I guess I wanna stress, um, burying a line is more complicated than just burying a communication, burying a power line. So it, it's, it's not that simple. I, I just leave it that way, but yeah, we can, we can look at that a little and maybe in more detail. But what I don't wanna do is something where we're not even gonna cut trees or, you know, there, there may be not many trees that we cut. So I, I guess I wanna make sure we spend our time and efforts correctly. But I guess I would ask, let's do the, the analysis on where, what trees are gonna actually be cut. And then maybe we can go from there. We can look at maybe, um, an underground, again, undergrounding project or, or something in a little more detail.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I just think that's probably the big question in the room is the scope and location of all of this. And the map helps. None of us have had a chance to really study it or look at it in detail, so I welcome that information.
I could provide a little context with regards to total cost of area of eighteen miles, let's say, of line in town. So you're talking fifty-plus million dollars in order to accommodate that. Our total plant value, everything that we have in terms of our headquarters, all our power lines, et cetera. That's about, it's a little bit more than that. Let's say seventy million dollars. Our whole plant is worth that throughout our five-county territory. So that gives a little perspective as to how significant this is. And as, as Gary has also indicated. So that gives a little perspective as to how significant this is and is, is buried and is also indicated. That's not some of the associated costs like, uh, splitting up utilities, water, sewer, telecommunications, gas lines, et cetera. It's a very expensive, um, process to, to underground. Um, another, uh, comment with regards to, uh, tree species. As we know, cottonwoods, uh, have a lot of water in them this time of year, but they do dry out in the fall and in the spring. Our highest winds, of course, are in the winter and spring months where it's dry. And our primary concern is impact of a line touching, contacting those tree limbs. So it's, yes, clearly sparks can cause fire underneath. Shishes and dry, dry grass when our line contacts, uh, a tree when it's dry and when it's windy. That poses a very significant fire risk, especially in a high-density residential area. So that obviously is something that we're very concerned about. Um, with regards to delay. From the board's perspective, which is when they looked carefully at our system and looked at the entire system. When they adopted the wildfire mitigation rider to accelerate this vegetation management. Recognition of the risk, right, to our community, to our forests, as well as to company. Because we potentially have liability. So if we are aware of a problem and we choose not to do something about it that we know is industry standard. We're running the risk of just taking that liability over the next year, whatever the, the period of time is that we might delay. This, the sort of wildlife, it's a wildfire initial effort. So maybe that provides a little.
Yeah, I have a question for returning Jeff Parker about our franchising agreement and what our, uh, our obligation as town in this, uh, conversation is. Um, are we, do we have more leverage than a regular co-op owner or what's? Just getting some more perspective on some of the claims that were made about our agreement with Sangre.
Yeah, well, I mean, first of all, you know, to give really any sort of heavy legal advice, I'd wanna have some time to consider exactly what's being proposed and look through your code and then talk to the board in executive session so I could just, you know, candidly share my legal opinion. But, um, in short, you know, you do have more, um, leverage and more authority to regulate the activities of, um, any utility providing services in the town, including Sangre de Cristo, because you have, um, police powers to, um, control activities, uh, in the town, including , um, powers governing tree trimming and right-of-way activities and that kind of thing. And you also have a franchise agreement that has contract provisions that require that Sangre de Cristo, um, comply with the terms of the contract. So, um, you, you do have authority to a certain extent, however, it's, it's limited by your contract terms and it's limited by the town's overall police powers. So, um, you know, I'd be happy to chat with the board a little bit more in a little more detail, but, um, to me, it seems like it, it could be, uh, helpful for any analysis to understand where exactly is Sangre de Cristo planning on pruning trees? Where exactly are they planning on doing their, you know, I guess, ground-to-sky fifteen-foot cutting? You know, which trees are gonna be affected? Um, uh, those kinds of things. And then, you know, we could look through, uh, make sure that it complies with the town's interpretation of its agreement. And it might be helpful to also understand from Sangre, you know, is, I heard, um, uh, their interim CEO basically state that, you know, this is industry standard. And I guess, you know, I haven't looked into that. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not true. I'm just saying that, I don't know. It'd be nice to sort of take a look at what other , uh, utility providers or at least, uh, electric utilities providers have for their standards for how wide they trim exactly, exactly. You know, uh, just to see what the options are out there. So, um, I, I think it also depends upon where they're, where they're conducting their activities. Is this all in-town right-of-way town property, which is basically what's subject to the franchise agreement? Or is some of this gonna be happening on private property and private easements, which is different as well? Um, also, it depends upon where in-town property they're doing it, you know, parks, open space are a little different than standard rights of way. So there, there's a lot of little nuances here, but I do think that the town does have the authority to require that they get more information from Sangre de Cristo so they can analyze whether or not it meets the town's standards and the franchise agreement's standards. Hope that was not too long-winded and helpful.
No, it's perfect, Jeff. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and I think, uh, Christie Cobb touched on it a little bit too. I think that's, the good point is that there's not a lot of things that we know exactly where this is happening yet. I think we definitely need some more information on this. This is obviously not, uh, this is a work session where we're not making any decisions. Um, but I definitely would need more information, I feel like, before I could be have any decision on this. Exactly.
So we need information.
Yeah.
Uh, Andrew, do you have any comments, questions?
I, I do. Just wanna say thank you all for being here. One of the, the asks that I've heard from folks in the community is that. The ask is that you would be courteous and communicative and selective. And I don't hear that you're opposed to that. I think there's also the, the question of where your lines are. You, you have to live within the easements that you have or within right-of-way. And if there is a particular tree in that easement, there's no more effective way to kill it than trench through its root system. You know, so you're left with a, a suite of poor choices. And I wanna just say that's, uh, that's a hard spot to be in. And we also understand that when you say if you're, if you're aware of particular risks and for whatever reason you choose to delay. I would imagine your insurance company would have some strong advice for you, you know? So you're really between a rock and a hard place and we understand that. And the ask is just to continue being courteous and communicative and selective where you can be. So thank you for being here.
Mayor Fede. May I just speak to some of the legal issues that Town Attorney Parker brought up on the franchise agreement?
Um, quickly, we've got one minute.
Um, the question under the franchise agreement is whether or not the maintenance is reasonable for Sangre de Cristo to maintain its systems in order to continue providing safe and reliable power to members of the community. Um, I think we can provide more information and believe it or not, this is not the first time we've had complaints from members about cutting trees and they're on their property. Um, so we've been engaged in multiple conversations with members throughout the county and other counties in service territory. So we have good information on what is standard industry practice for co-ops, for investor-owned utilities like Excel Energy and Black Hills. We can provide that information. It shows what we're proposing is a firm industry standard in order to provide reliable electricity to our members. Um, and then is it reasonable? And the franchise agreement gives us parameters of what is, is and is not reasonable. And I think as we look at where these primary power lines are located and we go through the town and we divide into quadrants, when we talk to homeowners, we talk to the town about where we're going to cut, which trees we're going to cut, and our contractor provides that information. That's where additional dialogue will happen, like, I love this tree. This tree is, has been here for three hundred years and is on the Turner Farm. Though there are considerations to be made as the process moves on. It's not something that has to be an all-or-nothing situation. So the, the franchise agreement helps us out a lot here and gives us parameters within which to work. Um, and it is a situation that doesn't require a year-long moratorium. We can have this happening, ongoing, uh, maintenance on the lines without stopping. And, or, or next week.
I do, Casey. Just to be clear, you represent SBC?
Yes, sorry, I'm Sangre de Cristo's general.
Okay, thank you. Gina, did you have a closing comment or question?
I was just wondering if, uh, Sangre would be open to having an appointed, uh, arborist? If, if the Tree Coalition and the Tree Advisory Board could select somebody to come along and maybe potentially, uh, be a part of that, uh, kind of tree assessment, uh, opportunity, just to have some skin in the game from a local side. I understand you have, I think, third party, but it'd be nice to have representation here from town as well. And I don't know if that's something that people would be interested in, but, um, that way it does help with that transparency. Um, it shows that we're all working together as a community, um, keeps up. Anyway, just a thought.
All right.
Andrew?
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
You said you're doing the town in quadrants?
That would seem like the, the best way to go about it.
Certainly, certainly seemed like some areas are a lot more of an issue than others.
Absolutely.
Would you be open to starting in the least impactful quadrant?
Would be probably where we would start.
And then there would be some.
We could do that.
Some demonstration of how you approach these things when the stakes are low?
We could do that. Uh, like I said, there's, there's a lot of assessment that's gotta go out and be taken care of. Nobody's gonna go out and just, you know, chainsaws aren't gonna show up tomorrow. So, I mean, we could, you know, ideally assess the more heavily vegetated areas right now. Um, and so, again, we, we're open for ideas.
Seems like starting in the lower-stakes area is an opportunity to build some rapport and some.
Sure.
demonstrate some of the way you will approach it that you can look at when you get to more of the high-stakes areas.
That was a very good point and I, I think that's wonderful. Yeah, um, just, just a comment, um. We are interested in and you are interested in researching clean renewable, renewable energy. And I know that that is the focus for you guys. Um, and that is supposedly for the good of our environment and it's what people want. Um. Going in and doing mass tree removal, I don't think is good for the environment. And apparently treatment removal hasn't been done for a long time. But I don't think going in and doing it as a mass in a one-year type thing is going to be acceptable to the community. Um, apparently it should have been being done gradually all along. And realizing that some people have probably planted trees, they had no business planting them. And I know that it isn't gonna be easy for you guys, but I think a slower approach would be more acceptable to all.
Just real quickly, we gotta tie. You used the word mass tree removal. We don't know how many trees will remove. So I don't know.
You, you can't give us a number. You can't give us an idea, but in some areas, compared to the amount of trees in that area, it'll be mass. It'll look mass. It'll look much different when you're done.
There's the one thing I would also add for the, like, tree groups for better, uh, for lack of a better term for all of the people there. I think is, you know, I think I'm looking into different funding mechanisms. Some of them don't totally apply here. Some kind of do, but they'll leave more work. I'd say do also some legwork on where these grants are instead of just, there's grants. Cause I think, you know, it's, it's easy to say there's grants out there, but qualifying for them, how competitive they are. If they'll, I mean, it could be that, that we can go underground for certain really important areas, I mean, not others, but maybe some more legwork on what those grants are, the qualifications, and then you all can answer what they find as to why it doesn't work or it does work or it could be pursued or not. Cause I think right now we're just gonna, from what I heard, at least, there's a lot of, well, there's grants out there. That's, it sounds great, but there's more to it than just that.
And we, we.
Could I just respond super fast? We, we have found, I, I know in the public comments people will be talking about that. It's not our job, really. It's, it's the, it's the utility that has the staff, that has a multimillion-dollar operating budget, that has a twenty-six-million-dollar federal loan to do that work. It's within their expertise and, and abilities.
Peter, I'd just say, one of the, we would also need to look at is burying, you've gotta stay within that easement. You know, that might prove to be more disruptive in the long haul for trenching. If your easement's really tight and you're gonna trench it in that easement, in the end, that may be one of, more of a scar. And so that needs to be, in addition to the financial cost, the environmental cost.
I, I don't disagree. Side-by-side, I'm just saying I'd like to know what, what the actual final financial conversation is, not just that part of it, but I agree, that's a part of the conversation too.
Okay, uh, we need to wrap this up. Um, but, uh, I really appreciate everyone coming and I'd like to continue this dialogue. Um, I think we feel better that you're not gonna run out and start cutting down trees tomorrow. So we do want good communication from you. We want this to be a data-driven approach and, um, just try to talk to us as much as possible. Um, and the board will be discussing this, I'm sure, among ourselves. You know, if, if not at tonight's meeting, then, then add another one, but, um, it will happen. So, um, thank you all. I appreciate everyone coming and, and, uh, I'm gonna, uh, close this meeting and we'll resume the regular meeting in five minutes.